Okay, I would like to call it to order the meeting for July 22nd. If you could please take the roll again.
Bowson.
Here.
Simonson.
Here.
Voss.
We might have lost him on the reg by.
Voss. Coleman. Westergaard. Mandelbaum.
Here.
Gatto.
Here.
Voss, are you there?
Voss is here.
We have.
Voss is here.
Thank you. The next time is approving the agenda as presented and/or as amended, and we have.
Mayor.
Yes.
I was gonna make, I was gonna slightly amend the agenda if I could.
Okay.
Item number seven, I would like to see us address before item numbers five and six. It was a suggestion that came in, maybe to all of us, but it was one of the emails we got, and I think it's a reasonable suggestion.
I think that will help our discussion.
I'll move it with this change, with that change.
Second. Second, please vote.
Do we need to add something? Did you, do we need to add something?
I think it was already added. It was three I and six is corrected.
Okay.
So it had already been added on our new one.
All right.
And I know there's been a lot of requests for public comment.
Voss votes yes.
We, we will, we don't have to on ordinance, but on the ordinance regarding number five through seven, we will allow 30 minutes of public comment and we will go into, what was it? Oh, five through six, okay.
Thirty for each one, or thirty?
No, we're gonna have 30 minutes on totally, and it will be, we'll have, to give both sides, we'll have one side line up over here and one side, so we can have an even number, if there is an even number, and we will get to that. It'll be 30 minutes totally.
Can, can we just add an agenda item that covers all of them, that is seven E, that is, or, or?
Public comment on both.
Seven point one comment for agenda items six and seven.
Can we do that? I guess we can, so we are amended.
Then I'll, then I'll, I'll add that, I'll amend my motion to add that, as public comment will be added to item number seven, so we'll discuss that before five and six, correct?
Correct.
That'll be my motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor? Aye, I guess we've already got up here.
Voss votes yes.
Motion carries.
Yep.
Okay, then that first item is item number three, approving alcoholic beverage license applications for the following. A Beechwood Lounge, do I need to read all this exactly? Okay, I guess I do. Four 16 East Walnut Street, Class C liquor. Item B, Drake University, 2615, special class C. C, Drake University, 2875, university class C liquor. D, Hy-Vee Fast and Fresh, number five, 1113 East Army Post, class E liquor. E, Hy-Vee Fast Fresh, number four, 4701 Fluor Drive, class E liquor. F, Thai Flavors, 1254 East 14th Street, special class C.
Move item three through, A through F.
Is there a second?
I, I, Joe, I think it's A through I. Is this?
I think three I is an extra one, right?
Yes.
Okay.
So three A through F.
All right, sorry.
You're good.
Is there a second?
Second.
Please vote.
Voss votes yes.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. Next item is three I, approving class C liquor license for Top It Off Liquid Catering at 4530 East 46th Street, sponsored by me. I would.
Move item three I, Your Honor.
Second.
Please vote.
Voss votes yes.
Seven yes.
The next item is item four, city clerk to issue cigarette, tobacco, nicotine vapor permits.
Move item four, Your Honor.
Second.
Please vote.
Voss votes yes.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. The next item would be then item number seven. Approving directions to city manager when implementing ordinance prohibiting sleeping and camping on public property. A is work with shelter operators, discuss current shelter practices and policies, and identify ways to reduce barriers to emergency shelter use. B is to establish an agreement with an animal service provider to shelter animals of unhoused individuals in Des Moines while individuals are seeking emergency shelter. C is identify secured personal storage options for unhoused individuals. D is establish a process making transportation available from camp pot, campsites to emergency shelter for individuals entering, entering emergency shelter.
And E is public comment, correct, that we added?
And, yes, and there are a couple of other things that I would like to add to this, and is this, I guess, appropriate time?
Yeah.
That I would like to instruct. I would like to add that we are going to be at, we add public restrooms into many of our parking garages. That the next one, I guess it would be F, would it, we would hire four outreach workers to work directly with our homeless population. And they would be giving the services, and also actually hiring a hearing officer so that we can expedite and give people the timeframe that they need in a shorter timeframe. So those are the other things I would propose to add to this item.
Mayor, your, your item G about the hiring is.
If we can look into hiring.
Yeah, we were, I, I, that, this is what I would have added, so maybe it's the same thing. The ordinance calls for us to have a local agency in place, you know, at the time we implement it. The local agency could be the outreach worker, like, the outreach workers don't have to be on city payroll.
Right.
They could be, they could be at an, at an agency or somewhere where we had an, an agreement. Is that, is that how you see it?
That could be too.
Yeah, okay.
But all of this, none of this will be, this, none of the ordinance will be implemented until these things are done by our city manager and city staff. And there is not a timeframe on that. We will get it done, but the ordinances that we're talking about forward on five and six would not be implemented till we make sure we have the safety nets of these items put in place.
So I, I mean, I have questions about that, and I think these are good items, and I think the additions are good additions. I think these are important steps. Several of these are items that were identified in the unsheltered study that was done in 2023, so I think, I think these are good pieces. In terms of, I mean, the one question I have, this is a non-binding resolution, and the ordinance will be law upon passage with implementation timeframes that, that indicate they're enforceable upon, upon passage. So to me, there's a little bit of a disconnect, although I think the manager, the city manager has indicated that he's not gonna instruct staff to enforce until that is done, but that gives me a little bit of heartburn, because these things are non-binding, may not happen, some of the language, and I had questions about some of these things. It, it, it said, you know, things like identify secured personal storage options. It, it doesn't say how we pay for them or what, what those options are, it just means identify, for example. And, you know, the, the question I, that really comes to mind too, is the first one is work with shelter operators and identify, you know, to discuss current shelter practices and policies and identify ways to reduce barriers to emergency shelter use. And on that one in particular, we just had a shelter operator say, you know, we need places for folks in our emergency shelter to go, here's a proposal for where we can go to twelve of them, like, what happens when we get that feedback back from, from our shelter operators? Do, do that project, help us there.
I think there's a difference between what you were saying, what we were talking before, and emergency shelter is immediate shelter. The other was more apartment living.
Well.
So there's, so basically, this is to be looked upon on getting things done and bringing all of our service providers together, because I believe we have much better ways that we can maybe work together in a closer way than, and that's what we're instructing the manager to do with that.
And the service providers can be part of the staff, is what I'm hearing. I think you said that, you, you both said that, that our service provider, providers can be those folks that we're, that we're talking about. Doesn't necessarily have to be on city payroll to do that.
Right.
So those can be immediately in place. We don't have to take six to nine months for hiring of any sort. That can immediately be done, because we have plenty of partners, I see a lot of them sitting out here, that, that could step in and help.
Okay, so for.
Josh, I know that you're uncomfortable with a little bit of vagueness, but I will assure you, I think all of our own, you know, we're all, anybody that supports this is saying, this needs to happen. I'm, I'm with you 100%. If we, if we, if we mess this up and don't have this timed right, I, I will join you in a lot of frustration in, in addressing that.
Well, I guess, eh, eh, part of the discussion, like, if we are saying, if we're saying, let's do these things first, and then implement the ordinance, why don't we just start doing these things and hold off on the action?
I think, I think what we heard staff say is, a majority of these are already, they're, they're ready to go on, a majority of these. The, 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 the animal services, some of, some of those things, I think talking to the, the shelter and best practices, we're, we're pretty much ready to go on the personal storage, so the majority of these things are, are, are already ready to go. So we need an ordinance in place.
Well, then it wouldn't hurt to delay things if a majority of these, I mean, we wouldn't be waiting very long.
Well, we'll have that opportunity, so at this point, this is item number seven, and we have, as far as hearing from public comment, we can, I take the, cover this one, and then have people come up and speak.
Do the 30 minutes now?
Or we can do the 30 minutes now, and then vote on.
Let's do the 30 minutes now.
Okay, so in order to, like I said, if we can have the people that are supporting the ordinance.
That way.
I get. People that are opposed to the ordinance over there, people that.
Are we just looking at seven?
No. We are just everything, we're putting it all together as public speaking on all these items. People that are opposed to the ordinance can stand over there, the people who would like to speak, and we will alternate.
That would like to speak.
The people would like to speak for or against. If you do not support the ordinance proposed and want to speak, you can stand over there, you will get two minutes each. The people who support the ordinance will stand over here, and you will get two minutes each. We will take one from one side, one from the other side. Okay, is that clear? I.
Up to 30 minutes.
Okay. Right. Okay, so is everybody clear on what we're doing?
Do we need to grab the microphone and give it to them?
Which one? So, first person, if you want to state your name, address.
My name's Jim Hagberg, I'm a JAPA director. JAPA is a homeless ministry at 2326 Euclid. We know homeless is a complex issue, and I'm president of a, and CEO of a small design build industrial, we do industrial, complex industrial projects from California to Delaware. I've also done them in Russia, Eastern Europe, and South America. I, I grew up in Spencer, Iowa, served my country in Vietnam, came out of Vietnam with a very serious drug problem, and for a number of years, drug addiction and poor choices alienated me from my family, and frequently, I was homeless, living in a tent, living in my truck, or in, on somebody else's couch. For two years, I lived in an abandoned farmhouse, living off what I could hunt, grow, and gather, and this abandoned farmhouse became a safe spot from which my life was rebuilt, first as a welder, then as a mechanical engineer. JAPA, I think you all know, JAPA Village is a spot, place where we're trying to create a safe spot where other homeless people can come and find shelter, can find permanent housing, and can find actual solutions to the homeless problem. With your support, we, we can get, our goal is to get 20 chronically homeless people off the streets into permanent housing by 2026, with additional 150 people off in following years. I've recently been named the project director for the project. Earlier this year, we quickly raised the money to purchase the 22 acres. We know there's great enthusiasm for helping realize our full vision for the village. Nearly 2 million has been committed or identified for our project, and donors are waiting for rezoning, which we hope you all.
Next speaker, again, you have two minutes, name, address, or ward.
Yeah. Good morning, I'm Shane Houston, Ward four. Currently, I've been a longtime resident in Des Moines, I'm one of JAPA's board of directors, and we're here to talk about how to help provide housing for, for the homeless people, volunteer, help them, that's our goal. You're in a tough position to deal with this, but I believe we can, we can help, and there's room for everyone to be a part of the solution of this. I think we need multiple players, multiple levels of things to help them. Helping individuals that are seeking homes is exactly the piece that we've dedicated ourselves to. Many of us, including myself, give time and hours through that. And what we think we can do, we show that we can help provide this solution. In 2008, we've helped more than 600 families get into the homes, and of those 600 families, 83% of them are still there, and we're looking to add more resources to help more people put a roof over their head. Last year alone, we put 65 people into the housing. It's in line, alignment with, with getting the people off the street and helping them. The number of experience, the number of those experiencing homelessness continues to grow. For three consecutive years, JAPA has served a record number of homeless people in Des Moines, and this is an ongoing effort. We look to be a part of the solution with you. You are looking to do this now, and now is the time for all of us to do it together, and I thank you for allowing me to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Rachel Gulick, 2310 Stanton Avenue. I use they than pronouns, thank you for having us this morning. I want to speak to the nuance of this policy. As an individual who was homeless as a 18 to 20 something year old because of my gender identity and sexuality, at a time when my family was not supportive, this really resonates to me as someone who had to find a place to park. Also, my uncle, who was neurodiverse, served in Vietnam, came back to Des Moines after service and was not the same person, chose to go out to California and live the rest of his days, despite my grandparents repeatedly bringing him back to Iowa to try and care for him. He died in California homeless. I think we need to address the fact that there are not enough spaces in Des Moines emergency or not for people. As someone who worked at St. Joseph's Homeless Shelter, I understand that from a first-person perspective, and the city's resources being utilized to clean this up at $50,000 a month seems like quite the investment of $600,000, just based upon the numbers we see today, for cleanup, not to take into consideration, you know, a permanent position that would have to be funded in perpetuity, of which we don't really have clear numbers on what that would look like to fund. And I think it's maybe indicative of a larger issue in the state of Iowa with coming from a state level under the golden dome of not, you know, taking care of our, the least of us, so to speak, as I was raised in the evangelical church, we would say. But I think that the, the response is far from proactive, and this is not a proactive move, it's reactive, and thank you.
Good morning, my name's Tom Hermakka, I'm a retired banker, other than that I still chair the bank board and holding company board. I've been a volunteer for JAPA for over 12 years, and I've been the treasurer on the board of directors of JAPA since February 2002. Thank you for this opportunity. Considering the significant increases in homelessness the last two years that you're all aware of, we've more than doubled the amount of homelessness here in the Des Moines metro area. We understand the need for this ordinance and amendment being considered today, however, we feel this amendment by itself is only placing a Band-Aid on the problem of homelessness here, and we need to aggressively seek long-term alternatives and permanent solutions to this problem, which JAPA is prepared to do. JAPA and JAPA Village Coalition, co-headed by Joe Stevens and former mayor, county, have worked collaboratively with many stakeholders the past five years to garner support for a permanent housing project that will immediately transition, or over the first year, transition 50 homeless individuals off the street. The mission of the coalition is simple, to develop, build, and create a community of affordable, permanent housing units, and a living environment that allows homeless persons to transition back into a mainstream population. Combined with the outreach services and support program that JAPA will provide, as we've demonstrated over the last 15 years, these formerly homeless persons may and will return to a life of respectability and dignity. We've been working towards this homeless solution both fiscally and programmatically for the past 15 years, and just picked up the pace. In the last six months, we exercised an option and acquired land, 22 acres.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, my name is Joe Dolek, and I'm at 300 East Grand, and I was formerly, was at 218 Sixth Avenue, which I'm sure many of you guys have received my emails about that. When you're looking at number A, or letter A on the agenda right up here, letter A is not gonna solve this. We should not be placing the burden of operations onto our nonprofit partners. This needs to be a regional, working with the county level, not here, just in Des Moines, but we need to work together. I wish Pleasant Hill would have done their 100 beds of their transitional housing, but that didn't happen. But I also wish that we would have just had the 10 beds, or 12 beds, over there on the south side, and that didn't happen, because they were just one step away back from being unsheltered. I was, defined by HUD, imminently homeless 10 years ago. HUD will not pay for those to go in the shelter more than 90 days. So we need to come up with a solution if we're gonna push this to the charitable foundations, the charitable work. I would never personally stay at SIS. It's one step above a prison, and my anxiety would go through the roof. Currently, right now, Bethel Mission is over one run with bedbugs, and I'm not saying this to disparage them. They need your help to allow, to want people to come in and stay. Chris Coleman, I disagree with this ordinance that you proposed in saying that it is not criminalizing homeless, because it is. Because if it's $5, $50, $5,000.
Thank you.
Good morning, thank you, Mayor and City Council. This is a very tough decision, and I'm Angela Conley, Polk County Supervisor. I represent all of Polk County, so all of you. I have been obviously part of the homeless situation and part of the coordinating council. I sit on the Polk County Housing Trust Board, I now serve with JAPA. I'm very compassionate, and I know this is a tough issue for everybody, but I also drive down MLK, and I see. drive down MLK, and I see the camping tents, and I see what it does to our city and our community. I hear from our staff that have to go over the trash and the areas of all kinds of things that they have to walk through, through the skywalk, getting to the admin building in the morning when, in the parking ramps. And I hear those complaints, particularly in the winter, and I think we need to do something about it. And I understand that you're trying to pass an ordinance. And I am really glad that you're working on the aspect with social workers. I think we really need to do that. We need to have an outreach system. And you've done, you've come a long way, and I think our community has come a long way. And the gentleman that just talked about a regional system, I just wish, I wish it wasn't just in Des Moines. Connie and I serve on the MAC, and we're supposed to come up with a system that really reaches out to the whole community, and we're working on that, but it's going to take some time. But right now, this is in front of us. We want people to come to our community that are proud to go down MLK to see what it happens when we have conventions. I was just at the national volleyball tournament. My granddaughter played at Wells Fargo in Hy-Vee Hall. There was someone that mentioned homelessness and the tents that are around. I'm embarrassed to say that we have that. So I'm pleased to say that you're doing something about it. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Morning, Council. My name is Keenan Crowe. I'm the Director of Policy and Advocacy at One Iowa, as well as a resident of Ward One. I'm deeply concerned by these proposals, both in policy and their process. The justifications offered fall far short of demonstrating their necessity. I do want to remind all of you that homelessness disproportionately impacts LGBTQ folks and in particular LGBTQ youth. Approximately 40% of our homeless youth population here in the U.S. is LGBTQ identified, and between religious exemption legislation that will embolden landlords to discriminate against LGBTQ tenants, and legislation forcing educators and counselors to out their transgender students, these numbers are only going to get worse. We have a serious problem, and I can assure you that no organization working in this field suggests the solution involves either criminal charges or issuing fines. The policy criminalizing sleeping in public is inhumane. It would effectively mean that anybody sleeping in their car but parked on a public street, sleeping under a bridge, et cetera, would be criminalized. These people are already in an extremely vulnerable position, and assigning them fines in court dates will in no way improve their lives. Pairing this with language about vulnerable people needing, quote, "tough love," and claiming that this is not criminalizing homelessness only adds to my concerns. The ordinance says this is a misdemeanor, plain as day. Stating that it is not criminalization is very simply a lie. Even the city manager's office in their presentation this morning noted that it was a criminal offense. They also noted that the ordinance was modeled off the one in Grants Pass, and one need only look at the dissenting opinion in the Grants Pass case to see a compelling rebuttal. The dissent, joined by the entire liberal wing of the court, begins, quote, "Sleep is a biological necessity, not a crime. For some people, sleeping outside is their only option. The city of Grants Pass jails and fines those people for sleeping anywhere in public at any time, including in their cars if they use as little as a blanket to keep warm or a rolled-up shirt as a pillow. For people with no access to shelter, that punishes them for being homeless. This is cruel and inhumane."
Leon Winokamp, 3212 East 43rd Court. A question first, is this ordinance not, did I hear, applied to public parks?
Well, we already have, where you, yes, you cannot.
Yes, it applies. Yes. No public parks. Because my concern is downtown. Public Library, Papa John Green Space, and the Sculpture Park, which is showcase for our city. I drive through there on my bicycle probably every day for the past 30 days, and it is embarrassing to have visitors from out of town come, have people sleeping on the benches, sleeping in the sidewalks, sleeping on the grass, brushing their teeth in the drinking fountains, emptying trash cans and order, looking for cans, alcohol, solicitation, to name a few. Everything goes on, and it just makes me mad. And I don't care about the rest necessarily as much as I do about downtown. But in answer to the Martin Luther King issue and the trash and such, that's a picture of 11th Street and Martin Luther King as of yesterday at 11 o'clock. I rode by there probably a week, 10 days prior to that, there are two tents down there. The tents have now been gone. That is the mess that has to be cleaned up by the taxpayers, and it's disgusting. The second picture is a reason why we go to three days instead of 10 days. Three days, you wouldn't have a walking path to the encampment. After 10 days, it's way too long. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. The next speaker.
My name is John Noble. I live in Ward One. I'm deeply ashamed that it is my representative who brought this cruel, cruel ordinance forward. This ordinance is cruelty, and as they say, you can wrap a rotten fish in a non-binding ordinance, but it still stinks, and this whole thing stinks from the head down. We already had a cruel system. I have seen it firsthand. I have seen it happen. I have seen it after the fact. I have seen the cruelty, and all this would do is speed it up. All this would do is make it happen faster. All this would do would make your corrupt buddies in the Greater Des Moines Partnership feel better about themselves because they don't have to see the people who are suffering in this city. There are people suffering in this city, and if you speed up the cruelty with which we already treat them, I'm even more ashamed of every single one of you. If this ordinance goes forward, I am ashamed of this city. I am ashamed of the way that we treat our neighbors. I am ashamed of the way that we prioritize the needs of the rich and of CEOs before the people who are hurting in this city. I am ashamed to raise my son in this city. I am ashamed to live in this city because it is clear that this city does not care about poor people. And if you cared about poor people, you wouldn't be moving this ordinance and wrapping it in non-binding resolutions. You would be pumping money into the resources and the services that people in this city need. I am ashamed. This has haunted me, and if you vote on this, this will haunt me, and this will haunt the people of Des Moines for generations. One more thing to say, you can say that a misdemeanor is not criminalization. I was arrested for a misdemeanor in this chamber. I went to Polk County Jail. There are other people in this room who've been arrested for misdemeanors, and it ain't pretty, all right? It's not a pretty thing. It's not a comfortable thing. This city should be keeping people safe and warm and protected, and all you want to do is hurt them on a seven-day faster period.
Hello, my name is Sarah Schuler. I'm the Director of HR for Flynn Wright. We're located in downtown Des Moines at 1408 Locust Street. We are a local advertising firm, and we employ almost 100 employees. And I've had the opportunity and the privilege of working in downtown for over 20 years, the last three at Flynn Wright. I've had the experiences of walking in the skywalks or of walking in the city streets. And we all know that when we live in a city, that we're going to face challenges. We understand that. But since COVID and since my time with Flynn Wright, the incidents have really continued to escalate. One in particular sticks in my mind. We had a young employee of ours who was leaving in broad daylight from our office to a parking lot and was chased. And I don't know for you all, if you know what this number is, it's 515-283-4811, which is the non-emergency number for the Des Moines Police Department. Anytime those situations have happened, we will call or we will call 911. In this particular case, because the individual did not throw anything at her or hurt her, there was nothing more that could be done. The individual did move, the individual did walk away, and our employee did file a police report. It is imperative that we have a safe place for our employees, not just inside their walls, but outside the walls, too. When you're onboarding new employees, there's lots of things that you cover with them, and I've not necessarily always had to cover safety in downtown, but I do. I want to make sure that our employees are safe, not only in our workplace, but outside our workplace. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Good morning. Dave Stone, 1417 34th Street, and I'm also here representing United Way of Central Iowa. We wanted to raise some necessary improvements to the continuum of care and affordable housing. We've been working in this space for decades, and our own 211 data shows that housing is the number-one issue facing our region. We believe that the complexity and expense of this requires a multi-sector approach that includes government, business, nonprofit, the faith-based community, as well as the voices of our neighbors with lived experience. We currently fund 25 housing entities with $1.8 million a year in investments, and we recently, with the Community Foundation and Bravo, ran a nonprofit survey that showed the health of our nonprofit sector is actually weak. Without increased support, we won't be able to meet the increased need. You may be familiar with our Alice Report. 49% of our fellow Polk County residents are unable to meet a survival budget. 49% of our county residents cannot meet a survival budget. For those who make less than $30,000 a year, from 2017 to 2022, there's been a 37% increase in rents. The average rent in our region right now is approximately $1,000 a month. There are 62,500 Central Iowans burdened by being housing costs, and the average home in our region sold last month for $300,000. We worked with this council on a, previously on a legal source of income ordinance that was preempted by the state, as you are aware. And as you are also aware from the point-in-time count, we were unable to shelter all those individuals from last winter, the 715. Des Moines Public Schools reports 736 students are currently experiencing homelessness or unstable living conditions. And according to Homeward, as of July 15th, there were 133 families on the waiting list to enter a family shelter. We are aware that there are significant gaps in our continuum of care. However, we just wanted to raise concerns that this needs to be done in a multi-sector approach. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Hello, my name is Ben McClain. I'm the CEO at Ruon Transportation Management Systems. Our company's been employing individuals in Des Moines for 90 years, and we want to continue to do that, and we want to continue to do it downtown. And the reason I'm here is because of the 500 employees we have today, this issue is their number-one issue about working downtown. Clearly, this is a complicated issue. It's not easily solved, but our employees are in the exact same position of candidly many days not wanting to be in and around downtown. That is not the situation we want. We know this issue is complicated. Everybody who's struggling, they have their own story, they have their own challenges about how they become homeless. But you do need these tools to encourage people to get the help they need. You absolutely need it. If we're talking about a misdemeanor that you can get for speeding, the idea that this similar rule could apply to the kind of things we have to deal with downtown is acceptable. You need the tools. I'm thankful, our employees are thankful that you're willing to take it up. Obviously, there's a lot of disagreement about how we do this. We may need to do clearly more than just this tool, but you absolutely need this tool if you're going to make the city feel safe for employees, employees, for visitors, for businesses that are going to renew leases downtown or not. We know many cities have struggled with this. We're not alone. This is a tool you need. I encourage you all to vote yes on it. You've got the common sense then to go and implement it as you see you fit, to keep people safe and to also help those who are struggling with homelessness. I know you can do both of those, those things with this ordinance. I encourage you to pass it.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, my name is Mark Stringer. I live in Des Moines. I serve as the Executive Director of the ACLU of Iowa. We're at 505 Fifth Avenue. We strongly oppose this amendment to the Des Moines City Code. We have submitted a letter of opposition to this proposal. The U.S. Supreme Court recently rejected one challenge to a similar anti-sleeping ban out of Grants Pass, Oregon, as has been noted, but that does not mean that the government can ignore the Constitution. This means the homeless people are protected by the Constitution, including due process, the right to be free from unwarranted searches and seizures, the right of free speech. This policy will violate people's rights. Government officials, meaning police officers, will be on the hook for violating these rights and liberties. It will not help solve the problem of homelessness. Moreover, it violates the conscience because it criminalizes people for the simple fact that they need a place to sleep. They need a place to sleep. Let's also note the council has the power to increase shelter services in this city because you choose whether to put that in the city budget. Rather than further criminalizing homelessness, you could fix the problem or help fix the problem for people. You have the power to do that. You should. We're also deeply disappointed in the city's attempts to fast-track this law without the proper public input. The secrecy and speed with which the council is set to approve this change is wrong unless the council changes course. Citizens will have to conclude that the council is trying to get this by under the radar. That's unacceptable. Something so significant for people deserves true public input, followed by careful deliberation of government officials. There's no need to rush. Nothing in what the council is considering today could be further from the values and compassion of the people of Des Moines. This council should vote no on every piece of this harmful proposal, then it should get back to critical work of helping people get shelter and sustainable housing in Des Moines. Thank you.
I'm Betty Andrews. I'm State President for the Iowa-Nebraska NAACP. I'm getting some texts right now all of a sudden. And our address is 1535 Linden Street. And then also, our Des Moines branch did file a letter in opposition, so just wanted to make sure you all had that as well. But our, our key points are, first of all, even just here today, the inconsistencies I heard were amazing. Everything from the three-day arbitrary number, changing that timeline, to no model, to affirmative defense, and whether something is impractical or not, and then the fact that removal means arrest, and whether a person will be in prison. We heard different stories from the attorney here today versus the police who would be implementing this, and I feel like the encroachment is actually on the residents. Homelessness is not a crime. I repeat, homelessness is not a crime. Mental illness is not a crime. Being hit with tough circumstances is not a crime. And I also feel like you're putting the cart before the horse. You have several things that you'd like to see implemented before this can take place. I say that we implement those things and then turn, look at whether or not we need to do anything additional. And then also, everything that those that are speaking in favor of this amendment can be done without funds. I'd also like to point out the minority impact, particularly for black citizens. The point-in-time survey held that homelessness affects blacks in our city at a rate of about 250% that of whites, so this will make, the, the law may not be, may look colorblind, but the impact is, is going to be disparate. And then I heard the term "people behavior," "people behavior." The ordinance targets residents instead of the system. The city should chiefly address those resources.
Hello, my name is Angie Arthur. I'm Executive Director of Homeward, and I want to share a few perspectives from Homeward, the regional planning organism, homelessness planning organization in Polk County. The realities of homelessness that the council are trying to address are very real and serious and require coordinated response and collaboration with service providers and community members. Homeward looks forward to working together to create regional solutions. We appreciate the changes that were made in the ordinance since it was originally presented to service providers last Thursday. Our request to the council is that the very critical moment would be that you take a step back and consider additional community and provider input and create a more coordinated approach to addressing the challenge. Homeless support structures and resources are already overextended. The January 24th homeless inventory count showed that the utilization of the system is nearly 98%. This policy would, and additional housing resources do not exist. This policy would be setting up law enforcement, our providers, and our neighbors for failure. Fines added to the barriers preventing people from finding permanent housing. Individuals face fines, with fines, face challenges when renewing licenses, filing car registrations, and signing leases. And any action that creates payments due to or criminal history records for unhoused folks could impact their ability to receive social services and secure housing in the future. If you remain committed to this course of action in light of the concerns shared here and with others, two weeks is not enough time. Two specific challenges identified. At least two to three months intentional planning and strategic solutions. The changes will negatively impact the ability of service providers to establish trust and ultimately encourage unhoused people to seek housing and support.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I'd like to share the rest.
We will have one more speaker, and then we will call it, and then we'll have to go to the meeting.
Your Honor, I'll move to receive and file Homeward's comments.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Vows, votes yes.
Hi. I'm Vernon Delpass, and I serve on the Board of JAPA, and I am, some of you may remember, the former CEO of the YMCA. I moved here in 2002 and served for 14 years, and when I moved here in 2002, I immediately stood in my office across the street at the Riverfront Branch, and one of the things that I said, you know, during my tenure here, probably one of the biggest decisions I'll ever make, or what to do with this, and you know this, was 188 men, shelter specifically for men that was not in good shape and was located right in the heart of downtown. And one thing else I learned during that time, because until then, to be honest, I hadn't been in a situation where I had to deal with the homeless much, was that people experiencing homelessness all have a story. And as I talked to many of them, and I had an opportunity to do that each and every day, I found out that they weren't, many of them weren't a whole lot different than me, only they made a bad decision along the way they couldn't recover from, or just a lousy circumstance they found themselves in and ended up there. But that wasn't necessarily by their choice, and we wanted to do the best we could to help them make the most of their life. And one of the things that we can all agree to here is part of the solution to this is to have more, more low-income housing that's available for the chronically homeless especially. We can all agree to that. I think everybody can. And here's what I learned about Des Moines, because compared to some people, I was a newcomer, but what I found...
Thank you. If you have any other comments, anybody can send to us. I know we've received quite a few emails, so I will turn back to the item number seven, and if there's any more discussion on that, I think we...
I would move item seven.
With the additions.
With the additions that Mayor Bozen has suggested and that many people in the audience referenced, I think the timeframe, as you laid it out, Mayor, responds to many of the concerns about making sure that this process is matched up with the implementation of the other ordinances, and so this is, to me, the most important one, and I'm glad we're voting on it first. We have to do better.
So moved and seconded. Please vote.
But I just wanted to say...
Okay. Go ahead.
I support these items. I think the additions are good. I think these are important items. I do think these things should come first, and I hope we will take the time to properly implement these things, engage properly with the provider community, and evaluate what enforcement looks like. And I know what is, what may be going on here, but I think these pieces are critical, and I think folks will be watching what happens next. I would still prefer that we have a little more certainty that these things get implemented before enforcement implementation, but I'm happy to move them forward as we take the next steps.
Mayor County, Mayor County, Bozen, are we waiving the second and third reading?
On this item, there is a resolution.
This is seven.
Resolution. Okay. Thank you.
It's close. The names are close.
How do you vote, Carl?
Did he say Mayor County?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. Next item is item five, the ordinance amending sections 102-8, 102-615, and 3-23 of the Municipal Code relating to abandoned property and the removal of encroachments. A is the final consideration of the ordinance above. Waiver requested by Scott Sanders, city manager, requires six votes.
I'll move item number five. Second.
Second.
I'd just like to make some comments on this item before folks vote, if I may. And it's a little bit of a struggle to talk about both these pieces because they're a package, but I feel a little bit differently about different pieces. But one of the things that I have concern with on both pieces, you know, this is a major policy issue, and a very significant issue in front of, in front of local communities. And I have serious concerns about the process. Until this morning, we had not had a work session or council discussion about any of these things in a public forum. One of the things that we haven't even done as a council is have a discussion about the needs assessment that has been conducted and that identified gaps in homeless services in our community. To me, that's an important piece that should come first. I'm also concerned that, to my knowledge, we didn't engage the policy area experts and the homeless service providers or ask for their input. These proposed changes will have a major impact on the homeless service providers, and they were told about these changes on Thursday. And I compare that to the process that we have when we consider TIP and abatement changes. We had two months of outreach to developers about those changes before anything came before council. The difference in outreach and approach is striking to me. It's also my understanding that the homeless coordinating council has not had a meeting about these changes, nor does it have a working group to address these changes or the other items that we just passed with item seven. And then on top of that, we're here on a Monday morning, having a special meeting with pressure to rush the proposal and waive the second and third reading. And I have not received a good explanation for why this vote had to happen at a special meeting. I should note, it's at a time when we encourage folks to schedule vacation. As is evidenced by the fact that the city manager, the city attorney, and one member of council are all unable to be here in the chamber for this meeting. For, I'll just say, I'm baffled, I'm baffled by how bad this process is on such a significant community issue.
And a second.
Mayor, I would like to make a comment. I will not be supporting this for the same reason.
There's a margin and a second.
May I?
Oh, I thought you were...
Yeah. I have no, I take no issue with advancing the timeframe. When I met with the city manager last week to get some clarification on this particular item, I stated that it didn't seem to matter to me whether it was three days, 10 days, but we needed to be consistent. What I found troubling was, I didn't learn until midweek last week that there could be fines imposed, that there could be charges against these folks. These are homeless folks. I'm convinced we can get there in some way, but I do not support the language as written today.
Madam Mayor, I had a few more comments on this particular item.
Are they different from what you've said in the previously?
Yeah. I'd like to explain, explain my vote.
I'm just asking.
I don't have, I don't have that much more on this particular item. Like I said, I have less concern about this item, although I have concern, because I think, I don't think it's a great use of resources to speed up our process. I think if we are concerned about the duration, we had steps that we could take, one of which we are taking. Adding an ALJ will likely do more to speed things up from a process perspective. And again, I think we should take, make changes like that first. I also think that we're potentially inviting legal challenge here, and I don't want to spend limited resources on legal challenge. I'd rather spend it on services. On this item, that is why I'm voting no on this particular item. I'll have more to say on the other item.
Carl?
Yes.
Five yes, two no.
Motion passes. The next item is number six. Oh, sorry. Oh, 6A.
He just moved six. He didn't move 6A. He only moved six.
Okay.
Or five.
So we have, for an ordinance to take it back, we need three readings. They just, each reading needs a majority of those. If we start with the second or third reading, that needs a super.
So it fails. The waiver of the sand. The first reading passed. So the first reading passed, so the motion, we'll bring it back.
Yeah, it comes back.
Right. Comes back. Okay. So the next item is ordinance amending chapter 102 of the Municipal Code relating to prohibited camping. A is final consideration of the ordinance above. Waiver requested by Scott Sanders, city manager, requires six votes.
I'll move item six, Your Honor.
Is there a second?
Yes. Second.
And I'd like to speak on this item as well. And I think this particular item, this is the item that amounts to criminalization of homelessness in our community, and this ordinance does nothing to house a single person in our community. As Justice Sotomayor pointed out in her dissent in Grants Pass, the status of being homeless, lacking available shelter, is defined by the very behavior singled out for punishment, sleeping outside. Saying that this ordinance is not criminalization, no matter how strenuously, does not make it so. I tried to understand the piece that we're trying to accomplish here, because there are issues that I agree we need to address. I hear complaints from folks, too. I think there are problems if people are defecating in public. I think there are problems if someone is harassing someone from, you know, everyone in our community should be able to use our community, and if someone is harassing someone else or threatening them, we should, we should take steps to address it. But I think we can do so in more measured ways. And I don't, I really struggle with the claims that this is about getting folks into shelter. That rings hollow to me. None of the professionals who work closely with the homeless in our community would say that this is an effective way to get folks into an emergency shelter. None of the folks who work closely with our community would say this is an effective way to get them the resources they need. The evidence that we have is that policies like this one in front of us, at best, they move folks around, at best, and at worst, they create additional barriers to housing, stability, and recovery. It's my impression, and maybe it's not the intention, but it is my impression that this is designed to move folks around, maybe even just move them out of sight. In a worst case, maybe, maybe it's designed to harass folks to simply leave and give up on our community. But I think it's overly broad, and it's overly punitive, and if we wanted to accomplish some of these other, other pieces, I think there are steps that we can do with a narrower, more targeted approach, and I think we should be trying those things before we take this broad and punitive approach. Now, some of those are in item seven, and I'm grateful that, that we had an expanded list, and I think that is an important starting place. But, you know, I heard that we don't have tools to, to address these issues. There are a lot of laws already on the books that address some of these specific behaviors, laws that actually further public health and safety, such as restricting littering, laws against public urination and defecation, obstruction of roadways, possession of or distribution of illicit substances, harassment or violence. We can address those things, all of those things, if those are our concerns, with the enforcement of existing laws. And if we are struggling with how to enforce that, that is a conversation we should have, but we should use the laws we have first before we criminalize folks for sleeping outside.
Okay.
And there are also steps that we can take to reduce barriers to emergency shelter. Again, I think we're doing some of those things with the passage of item seven. My preference would be to see how we, if we actually implement them, how we implement them, how they are working, and then evaluate what's going on before we pass ordinance changes, and see if those things still make those ordinance changes necessary. My worry is that, as it currently stands, those items in a non-binding resolution, those items in a non-binding resolution may not be done at all. And then finally, I want to acknowledge that the real solution to homelessness is housing. We need, we need a variety of housing options, and we need more affordable housing throughout our community. Housing absolutely takes time to come online, and we are suffering the consequences of years of inadequate effort on housing. We also need the entire metro community to help address our housing shortfalls, but that does not mean that Des Moines should wait to act on housing until others do so. If we want to be serious about homelessness, if we want to be serious about this problem, we need to be serious about addressing the housing gaps identified in the needs assessment. Unfortunately, the only solution that is in front of us today is to criminalize homelessness, and I cannot support that.
Can I speak real quick?
Counselman Coleman.
John, I don't want to interrupt you. I thought you were done.
I can leave it there.
There's no doubt we have to continue to do better in a lot of ways, but we cannot discount the incredible strides that our community, meaning the city of Des Moines, has taken. I came back to the council with a pipeline of projects that is so impressive. Linda has a huge project on East Douglas that she's partnered with Hope Ministries for Women and Children. We have the Monarch Project on Merle Hay Road, innovative, new. It's going to be a great model. We have Ellipsis. We're working on a project at Plaz Lane's. We have approved projects that are in the pipeline at Drake. Joe has built a number of units in the last couple of years in his ward, he hasn't built them, you all have approved him, on East 14th Street, on Fluor, your ward, south of South Ridge Mall. We have other projects on East Tubal and, and East University that aren't, aren't built yet, but have the approval of the city. I don't want to discount the fact that, that this council, most of it before I arrived, has done a... We have other projects on East Hubble and East University that aren't built yet, but have the approval of the city. I don't want to discount the fact that this council, most of it before I arrived, has done an amazing job of putting projects in the pipeline because we know that. And then we open up the paper, or I turn on the computer, and see that our suburban neighbors continually turn down some of these projects that could add to it. I appreciate your focus on the metro-wide kind of solutions we need. But this council, before I got here, I'm thanking each of you and complimenting you, has a ton of projects in the pipeline. The project on Ingersoll, where the old gas station was, there are a ton of projects at different income levels that are really, really impressive. And if we didn't have those in the pipeline on the way to come, I'd probably feel different about this. But I think we've set ourselves up with some really, really good programs that have tons of units. By the way, I think it's important, I've been checking with the Central Iowa Shelter and Services on their census, how many people they've had for the last week or so. Every night, they have capacity. Part of the issue and other people, not me, have cited the grants pass, that, the heart of that ruling was, can you punish people if there's not shelter available? We aren't going to do that, and there is shelter available here. We have emergency beds, we're doing more, we have to do more, and we need to do it well so that the community continues to embrace it. But we have a lot in the pipeline, and I don't want this meeting to end by thinking everything the city's done on this issue, we're doing at this meeting. You guys have been hard at work for years, putting projects in place that are making a difference in people's lives.
Okay, is there a motion?
We can just open now.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, I just want to make a few comments. First of all, I feel a sense of urgency. I appreciate we've had all these organizations doing things, but we still have issues. Our goal is to get people help, is to get them off the street so they can get the help that they need. And I know we need more housing, we all know that, but we can't build a FASMA. We know that if we have outreach workers going out to help find out what the people are, what their needs are, we can get them help much faster. Some of the things we've done as a city, first of all, we have worked with Polk County to work on a sobering center for places to go get help. We've hired Amber Lewis to be over our homeless coordinator. We have embedded in our downtime library a social worker who is doing great work helping the unhoused and services that they are entitled to. And the number of people that they get social security, all the information, and get them housing has been incredible in a short time. Because of the calls for TUCs from our fire department, we have embedded EMTs in the Central Iowa Shelter. They've reduced transport 70% by having them eight to 11. So we have stepped forward and done that. When you see that we, the amount we are clearing and spending on cleanup, because people could possibly just leave, and you have 10 days of trash, it could be spent in providing services and getting more housing and giving the difference. So, shortening the time, I don't believe is that great of a difference. It's, we're trying to get everybody focused. If nothing else, we're going to make it clear that we're here to help people. I think we, as a council, have shown through our other actions and what we're trying to do, is ramp it up, and let's get doing what we need to do to help the people and get them the support they need, and not make, it's not about punitive. We clearly state, a person who violates this section commits a simple misdemeanor punishable by a fine of $50, and specifically excludes imprisonment and allows people to do community service to pay it off. We could currently, as Ms. Councilwoman Mandelbaum, we could do littering for fines up to 100, we could have public urinations for fines up to 300, and we could do, if you're in the park, up to 300. We are not doing that currently, is not our intention, is to help people, to get them help faster than they are getting it now. And we will work with the agencies to improve how we're doing it. And with that, it's been moved and seconded?
Yeah, we're voting.
Please vote.
All votes yes.
Five yes, two no.
So, motion, or item six passes.
Three.
Number eight, the ordinance amending sections 18-4 and 18-136 of the municipal code relating to agricultural, non-domestic animals and exotic animals and the types permitted. Final consideration of the ordinance, waiver above requested by Scott Sanders, city manager, requires six votes.
I'll move item eight, your honor.
May we have some discussion on this as well?
Sure.
So, this is another item that we hadn't had any discussion on, and again, I'd like us to take a narrower approach. There are two things that this does, it bans roosters, and it reduces the current number of backyard chickens that someone can have.
Shame on you, Tiffany.
There are, I mean, I think there are a lot of residents that have chickens, there are fewer that have roosters, but there are some who have roosters in reliance on this ordinance. I think there is a narrower way that we could, narrower way we could address these issues, and I wish we would slow this down and take some time to explore that. I don't support lowering the number of chickens, I don't think that's necessary. I don't know why that is in this ordinance, we haven't had a work session to discuss that. I understand the nuisance that roosters can make, you know, pets can make noise, roosters can make noise, dogs can make noise. If we want to give our residents an ability to address that, I'm open to working on ways that we can do that. I also think that there are people that can own roosters without disturbing their neighbors and without creating an issue, and I'd like to try and preserve that for those folks who don't have concerns of neighbors. And I'd like the opportunity to try and work through and address that. I understand this will probably go through, at least on the first reading, but my hope is that we slow this down and have some conversations, but I intend to vote no as it's currently written.
Any other discussion?
I would like to point out a couple of things. You're right, Josh, there are a lot of people that have chickens. There are also a lot of people that live next door to where chickens and roosters are, and they are being disturbed of their peace and quiet, they are disturbed by the smell, they are disturbed by the uncleanliness of everything in these backyards. I can give you some addresses where we have chicken coops in the front yards, right there on Euclid Avenue. So, I look to the League of Cities, I've printed out a copy of their document that they posted back in '21, that talks about our suburban neighbors, only if they even allow chickens, they allow up to six chickens. We are at a much higher number. None of our suburbs allow roosters. And you don't need a rooster for, you don't need a rooster for eggs, you don't need a rooster for anything. And that's why the ordinance requires pens and confinement, if you're concerned. This is something that has been a long time in coming. I hear repeatedly from residents who are disturbed by the roosters nonstop crowing all year long. And it is a disturbance, this is something that needs to happen. So that's why, when we've looked at this, I would be supportive of changing a couple things in the ordinance, and I've visited with legal, and I've been told that we can do that. It talks about lowering number H4, lowering the number to, we have now a total of 30, reduce that down to 12, if we could do that. You know, I did some work, it sounds like if you have 10 hens, they will produce five eggs a day. So, that's a pretty high number of eggs, I think, for just growing backyard, just having backyard chickens and hens. I would also like to request that we change HI, effective August 1st, 2025, roosters shall not be permitted. I think that we need to cut that down, make this effective August 1st, 2024, and then it can go right over to item M, where it talks about if you currently own an animal and you're not in compliance, then you can ask for a variance. But that way, we have some idea of who's got what, we're not taking anybody's personal property, but we are saying that we're banning roosters on August 1st.
Do we need to put a date in there, or can we just do it when the ordinance is passed within 14 days?
Yes.
I mean, that's, because if the second and third reading doesn't pass today,
Yes.
then we would just go on to the next council meeting.
That would be fine.
And then, we don't really need to put a date in there.
Okay. I'm fine with that. So with that, I would make a motion to approve this ordinance, subject to the changes that we've talked about.
This would be the first reading?
Number eight.
Yeah, I withdraw my motion, and I'll second hers.
8A, too.
There's someone who'd like to speak, if we're registered to speak.
We didn't.
Mayor Bowleson, are we just doing the first reading on this?
The motion is.
Depends on how the vote is.
The motion is that there would be final, it would be a waiving, right?
We have to have six votes.
She just made the motion to move item eight, not 8A.
No, I did do 8A.
Oh, you did?
Yes.
We don't have the ordinance in writing, we're changing.
Right, I think.
I'm Rebecca Delgado.
Okay, hold on, you weren't called up, we have no talking on this ordinance.
But we do.
I understand that, that's why I'm saying, I think we've made some significant changes, I think we need to bring it back to August 5.
I asked legal and Matt, and I was told that we could change minor things like that.
That's not minor.
Yeah.
That's not minor.
Okay, ma'am, excuse me, you were not, excuse me.
You can certainly go by number H and apply for that variance, keep your rooster.
Okay, there's a motion for eight and 8A.
The motion waives the second and third readings?
It does.
I mean, I've just asked to slow down and.
That's why I moved eight.
All school members of public.
Okay. Councilman.
Mayor Bowleson, is this the first reading, or is this a?
Hold on, Carl. Go ahead, councilman.
Linda, I feel really bad, I'm supportive of the changes that you made, but I did hear discussion ahead of time with the crowded room. I know people left because they thought there would be a second and a third reading. And the mayor and I talked to a couple of people, because that was.
Yeah, when we were out, the people had to leave, so, okay.
Why don't we just move first reading?
And then we can have it in writing.
And then we have public comment.
I'm supportive.
So, we will be bringing this back on Aug.
Carl?
Oh, sorry, Carl.
Yes. Vote yes.
This was just the first reading, we'll be bringing it back, and we'll have time for, we have the opportunity, if we want to, to have public discussion, but an ordinance, usually there is not. So, we will, I'm sure, hear from people, to give us your input. What?
Not an ordinances.
August 5. Yes.
Change is about public.
We're modifying an ordinance in that case.
One's from the pile.
So, you can come back on August 5, we'll have public comment.
Thank you.
Is there a second?
Thank you, Joe, I appreciate what you do for us.
Is there a second to adjourn?
Second.
Okay.
We are adjourned.